I'm gonna open up the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 5th. We're gonna call to order and then right away we're gonna get into reorganizing the board. So with that, I will make a motion to have Mr. Sadek be the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. I wanna welcome Mr. Jones, everybody, our new selectman.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And with that, I will also make a motion to have him be the Chair of the Board of Health. So I'll make those two motions, well, I'll make them in one motion.
Is that personnel or Board of Health?
Board of Health.
Okay. Second.
Okay, did you make that?
You made the motion.
Well, I'm looking for a motion, so you can make your motion.
Oh, just to be honest, normally it's, normally the rotation is Health, right? And then the new person gets Personnel.
We have a lot.
We have a lot going on.
We have the negotiations and we have a couple of issues within the Town Hall that we need to handle. Not with anybody, but with previous people in Town Hall that we're still in litigation with. So without having to teach you everything that went on with that. And actually, your expertise on the planning board will also help, you know, get you acclimated to the Board of Health. So I think that's probably a better way.
Okay, without any issues with that, I will make the motion unless you have an objection.
I do not have an objection.
Okay, very good. All right, so I'll make the motion.
And I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will now turn it over to you, Mr. Sadek.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, I didn't even explain that, but that's where my rationale was coming from.
Okay, so, well, we got that straight.
No.
Lisa, is Personnel?
No, I didn't make that, I didn't make that as part of my motion, 'cause I didn't want to make my motion myself, I was at, so...
Need a separate motion?
Yeah.
Need a separate motion to?
I'll make a motion that Lisa becomes Chairman of the Personnel Board.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, now we're good to go.
Now we're clear, good to go.
All right, anybody here for weekly public discussion? Don't everybody jump at the same time.
No, I just wanna thank everybody for coming out last night in that miserable weather to vote.
What was the total vote count? It had to be very low.
One eighty.
One eighty was the total vote count?
Total vote.
It was a bad day. And at one o'clock, there wasn't a snowflake on the road. And at four o'clock, we had almost eight inches of snow, so it was a tough day. All right. Person on the agenda is to award a bid from the Board of Assessors for Fiscal Year Seventeen, Eighteen, and Nineteen Certification of Values. Sue is here and Karen is here to explain the bid process and your recommendation.
Yes, we prepared an RFP with the assistance of Kimberly Faels, the Town Accountant, and Jack Lee, the procurement officer. And once it passed muster, we posted to the Central Register. It's a Goods and Services Bulletin on the Central Register. We advertised in the Standard Times. And we got two bids, or two requests for the RFP. One from Paul Capinos and one from a company called Tyler Technologies. The only one who chose to bid after seeing the RFP was Paul Capinos. We had dealt with Paul before. We have been happy with his work. And his bid came in at an acceptable level. Forty, excuse me, ninety-four thousand five hundred for the three-year, two interims, eighteen seventeen, seventeen and fiscal nineteen, and the revow for fiscal eighteen. And we, years ago, sought to level fund that. So it's thirty-one-five for each of the three years.
Do you have anything to add to?
No.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve in the amount of ninety-four-five to Paul Capinos with a, well, we can talk about level funding now either, but in the amount of ninety-four-five.
That group, the company, its name is PK Validations Group?
Evaluations, yeah.
Evaluations Group, okay. Is there a second?
Uh, second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, some discussion. What was the cost for the last three years?
The last one was ninety-nine thousand, ninety-nine-nine, I think.
So this is a reduction?
It is.
Wonderful. Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No, unanimous, there you go.
Thank you.
You're off the hook. Thank you very much.
We were happy to see you come in lower.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
We actually were a little like, oh, why?
No, it's because he's got more and more experience and...
Right, he knows the town, he knows the ins and outs.
Yeah, and the analysis are easier, he doesn't have to do as much. And now that they have an office down in Sandwich, they're actually closer. They used to be up, well, they do have their main office in South Adley. So they used to trek all the way down here to do our work. And now that they're in Sandwich, they've hired people that are closer.
Can you both talk a little bit about whether people should let them into the house or not?
We, I always encourage people to let them in.
Okay.
It's more or less, if they aren't allowed in, then they're just going and doing a visual inspection of the exterior of the property as best as they can. So there's, I'm not saying there's guessing, but they're using the field card that's available with what the town has on record for information. So based on that, that's what they're making their assessment on. If there's any errors in that town's, in the town's field card, which it can happen, we do our best to make sure it doesn't. But in the event that there is, there's no, if someone doesn't let us in, there's no...
Can I be correct?
Yeah, there's no...
And if so many questions that, what would you recommend they do?
Anyone can reach out to Karen or any of the Board and reach out and say, you know, we think, we believe that there may be an error on our field card. And we've always made appointments to go out and inspect and remeasure and always trying to correct any field cards that might be wrong.
It happens periodically when people go and have appraisers, either for a refinance or when they're getting ready to buy a new home. The appraisers will tell them, you know, this field card is wrong, you don't have a finished basement, or your attic isn't finished. And they will call us and say, can you send someone out? And as soon as we start our spring work, actually, it turns out to be our summer work, we send someone out and they inspect it. We get a lot of our information from MLS. So we are able to pick up things that people don't necessarily tell us about. But the Realtor is telling the whole world, you've gotta finish basement, 'cause that's a selling point. So we get our information from a bunch of sources, not just one. But if our field appraiser goes out and you won't let them in, they can only estimate.
Well, it's just like if you took out a building permit for, say, you were gonna renovate your bathroom and you never got to it, and even though you paid for that building permit, then I guess that they would second guess and say that you did...
You probably did.
And upgrade, and even though you did, so then that would be an instance when they would have to go to you and look at that again.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify, 'cause there have been questions, and I think that while you're here, I might as well take the time to make sure that people understand that.
We work for the people, but if the people won't assist us, they won't let us do what we're supposed to do.
Does it work the other way too, where, you know, the home might be twenty years old, somebody hasn't been in, you know, the property's become rundown inside a little bit, when they go in, they do an inspection, maybe they say, it's not worth what we had originally.
Yeah, it happens periodically, but we don't know.
Right.
You know, somehow it's deteriorate. While the neighborhood may maintain itself at a particular level, one house for numerous reasons, financial, physical, agent, disabilities, whatever, may not be able to do the same kind of repairs and maintenance on their home. But again, if we don't get in, we don't know. And when I get calls from people that say, there's somebody at my door who says he works for the town. All our information of the people we have out is on file with the Police Department. And we don't let them go out unless the police know that, who it is, what they're driving, what they look like. So we know about it, the police know about it, they always have a picture ID. So if they have any questions, all they have to do, A, and they come with a letter of introduction signed by me, telling who they are, what they're doing, and if they have any questions, call the office.
Yeah, I think it's important to let them in, because the homeowner's gonna get a fair shake as to what the town has for information. And, you know, I, the last time they came around was about three years ago, I think, at my place. They were very, very nice.
Yeah.
And I know that one of my children lives in town, and they're working all the time, so they left a note.
Yes, we leave a door hanger in case you're not there.
And I went down there.
So you can call and make an appointment.
It was just an easy process.
Yeah.
You know, I think people are better off to let the appraiser in, they can look around.
Right, that way you know you're only paying your fair share.
Absolutely. Anything else?
No.
Okay, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you much.
You too. Thank you. Enjoy.
All right, next thing on the agenda is to approve the Board of Selectmen's minutes from March twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen. And I guess only you and I...
I was gonna say, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna abstain for that.
Right.
Obvious reasons.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve with discussion.
I'll accept that and second?
Yes, and when we started talking about the solid waste, and you wrote, "Selectman Pachico says she is confused on why the insurance is so different", meaning that why the insurance for one company was significantly higher than the other company.
So you wanna amend that?
Yeah.
Okay, give us the wording to amend it. Did you get that, Ellen?
Yep.
Okay. All right, I wanna comment a little bit about the, well, the minutes of, the way they're written are fine as far as the thing I wanna comment on. I just wanna bring the board up on one of the issues that was on our agenda and we discussed back the last week. So with that adjustment, everything else okay?
Yes.
All right. Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the meeting, the Board of Selectmen's meeting of Monday, March twenty-first, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone abstained?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Just to bring you guys up to date, I received a call last week from one of the representatives of the company that's building a home. And they were, they wanted to move forward without the well being installed. They wanted to permit, move forward, put in a foundation without the well being installed. I told the gentleman that we follow the same procedures for everybody. And I did, I told him, I talked to the building inspector and the health agent, and they, you know, assured me that this is the normal procedure that has to be followed. I actually went out and took a look at the facility, because the gentleman that spoke to me said, you know, it's gonna be a couple of weeks before we can get the well in. And while I went out there, I went out there with the building inspector, he was last Thursday, probably Thursday or Wednesday, and who do we run into out there but the guy putting in the well? And he said, I said to him, how long is it gonna take to get the well? He says, two days. He says, my problem is I can't get in here because they got piles of sand in the way. So that's the only thing that's holding it up. There was a couple of other concerns, and I, in the building department, was dealing with that. So I just wanted to be an idea of what's going on, because they wanna get this house up as soon as possible, but certainly they have to follow, that everybody has to follow. All right, with that, the next thing on the agenda is discuss setting up a meeting with the Building Committee regarding a new police station.
Wow. It's a building committee. It's a building committee.
Yes.
So when do you wanna set that up?
Well, I'd like to get something, some meeting, this is the beginning of the month, probably before the end of the month. The Building Committee has never met.
Yeah, no, I agree.
But specific, specifically, this is for putting up the new police station, because you know what we went through this past winter.
Yes. I, I, I agree with what we went through this past winter, but I think that, I don't know if we ever made a, I don't know if we ever, like, voted on just a police station, or just a highway bond, or just a library, or just a this. I, I think we need to put our list of priorities in, whatever avenue we go down, that's the avenue that the Building Committee needs to decide on. 'Cause the Building Committee was remember made up of components of every, everything.
Right, I mean, at one point in time, we set up a Building Committee to look at the building needs of the town. At one point, we were talking about a centrally located Town Hall.
Right.
We were talking about a library.
Right.
Maybe a senior center.
Right.
And a police station. And I think that under the economic position that we're in, my personal feeling is that we probably need to look at the building that's most critical and in need of a change, and that would be the police station. It's too small for the staff that we have there, there's no room to store anything. Our files are being stored outside in trailers. And this, this past winter was horrendous. Finally, we got things under control over there with a new heating system, new HVAC system. But certainly, the building itself is not conducive to a police department. And that's why I had asked at the last meeting to have the Building Committee meet to discuss putting up a new police station. That was my feeling.
I'm not disagreeing with you, so, but, the Building Committee was formed after the feasibility study and before we made a decision on which avenue we're going. So I think that the Building Committee needs to decide on what building they wanna build. You and I may say, okay, you may say, I want a police station, and I may say, I want a joint police station Town Hall, and you may say, I don't want either one of them. But I think that that Building Committee needs to make that decision. And, and I think that we need to listen to what everybody... I know what we went through, and I know what, I know in my heart what buildings need to be, or what building, or what buildings. I haven't made a decision on how many buildings. You know me, I'll just sprinkle fairy dust and make them all perfect.
So I guess...
But I think that we do need to have a Building Committee meeting, and I think that once we have our Building Committee...
Give them a suggestion of what we're thinking about and then let them decide what they need.
Then everybody votes on...
And maybe they can come up with a decision, if the police station, the current police station's inhabited for another reason, maybe it's killed two birds with one stone, rebuild it, whatever they decide.
Well, right, the point here is...
There is a need at the police station, I understand that.
There's a need at the police station.
So, that's the base need.
But that doesn't mean that building's no good to us.
Correct.
That building is good to us.
Exactly.
Very good to us.
So that might also, that might alleviate one of the other issues that we need.
Correct.
Maybe, not saying that a library can go in there, but maybe think about and say, listen, we'll do this with the new station, and that can be used as this.
Right.
So, but either way, we need them to meet and start discussing what we need.
Yeah, we have to get the Building Committee together. So maybe we can get something like maybe the third week of the payment? See if we can get this over to them?
Two weeks, two months?
Yeah, to meet?
Yeah.
What, is that too close?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
Yeah.
How about the, who was on the Building Committee?
About twenty-five people.
A hundred people, that's fine.
Yeah.
Are they all still interested in being on the Building Committee? Have we reached out to them at all?
No, not yet.
Do they even live in town?
Yeah, right.
They very well do, if they don't live in town.
Have they returned their census?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, hi, Tim.
Hi.
I haven't seen you down there.
Tim's sitting here because he's filling in for Ally.
Next meeting.
Ally, you could really work this out well. If we have a Building Committee meeting on the twentieth, you're on vacation. There you go.
I'm on a state.
So please not that week.
We're taking a request, you know?
He speaks.
Well, it's not a Board of Selectmen's meeting, it's a building.
Yeah, that's even more, I think it's gonna be worse, though.
I think we should, you know, with the twentieth, I mean, I'm sure somebody can take notes.
Yeah, that's fine.
How about the twentieth? And will you be able to?
Can you meet the twentieth?
I'm just checking my calendar.
notify everybody if the twentieth is good?
Let's see a problem.
What is the twentieth?
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday, yeah, that shouldn't be a problem.
The only thing I got on that day is Ally's vacation, it says.
Six o'clock?
Aye.
Six?
Six o'clock here?
Six o'clock, Ally here?
Yeah.
Okay. And Ally, we...
Is six okay with you? Is that tight?
No.
No? Okay.
This time of year tomorrow.
Okay.
Just the winter months?
For twenty...
January, February, it's all the time.
Okay.
All right, so we put down tentative, well, not tentative, meeting for six, April twentieth, at six. At COA, all right. Next thing on the agenda, are we all set to move on?
Yeah.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is to approve and sign warrant opening permits for Maury Avenue. Maury Avenue, south side of one-twenty-three County Road, and Cushman Avenue. Maintenance of existing gas main, EverSource, has made the request.
Uh, make a motion to approve, it's already been approved by the Highway Department.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
I have not heard from you.
Huh?
Where is that?
What's that?
Where is Maury Avenue?
Where, where, where's, uh, post office, it used to be.
Oh, really? No, well, it's really tiny.
All right, discuss the deadlines for article submission to the special, for the annual, special and annual Town Meeting, and announce the dates and location of the special and annual Town Meeting. So look at the cheat sheet that Ally got us.
Cheat sheet, it couldn't be any bigger?
I know.
Like poster size. Next time, I'll make it really small.
Careful what you ask for.
My goodness.
As you can tell, Ally's thinking that we're getting old and have a hard time reading, but this is good for a guy like me. Ally suggests that we open the warrant articles on Wednesday, April sixth, which is tomorrow, and close the warrant articles on Thursday, April fourteenth, at noon. And our Town Council, Mark Rich, must have time to review all the articles for insertion on the warrants, so they must be voted on no later than May tw- second, two thousand and sixteen, by the Board of Selectmen. The last regular meeting to review, sign, and finalize the warrants is May sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen. And then you need a couple of days to post it for the final date to post the warrant, which is on May twentieth, two thousand and sixteen. Ally had suggested the date to me of April nineteenth, to review the warrant articles with the Finance Committee on April nineteenth.
And then meeting on April twentieth? What are you, have you lost your mind today, some heroics?
Well, I didn't say you'd meet, I didn't tell you guys to meet on April twentieth, you came up with that all by yourself.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Nineteenth is the meet, because of Patriots Day.
You're already meeting on the twentieth, the nineteenth.
Right, we're already meeting that.
Right. The twentieth is...
That's your regular thing.
Is that a Monday or Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, 'cause Monday's a holiday, you got a free day that day.
No, I'll be in Boston that day.
Right, am I running a marathon?
Marathon, no.
I'll be running, all right.
Be careful where you stand, honey.
Yeah. Don't have to remind me of that. All right, so let's get this straight. We're gonna open the warrant for April sixth, close it on Thursday, the fourteenth. Then we're gonna meet to review on the nineteenth. We already have a regularly scheduled meeting that night?
Right.
Okay. Then I would say, if we already have, oh, do you wanna meet the Finance Committee too, at seven?
We're posted for the nineteenth already.
At seven?
At seven. I didn't check the time.
I think you might have posted it at six.
I know we're meeting with you and...
Well, that was the idea.
Yeah.
Right, I don't mind meeting with them, and I think that's a great idea to go over the warrant articles, but if we have any other business, it's silly for you to be here for an hour while we're doing our business and then, you know, meet with you later.
I wanna say, I didn't check the time, I just know we got that night.
All we gotta do is ask the Chairman to change it to seven, right?
Yeah.
Sure.
Sometime, I think we're gonna meet with the police chief and so forth.
Well, that was another point.
As a joint deal with you, because you're not settled yet either.
No.
The police, the treasurer.
Yeah.
I think those are...
I was not at the meeting with them.
Yeah, Lisa wasn't there, but...
Right. So...
We've got...
You've met with, I know that there were some we're reviewing, did you know this too?
Yes.
All right. So, okay, so which, you met with the police chief and the fire chief?
Police chief, fire chief, there was an issue on communications, there was a thirteen thousand dollar, thirteen hundred dollar issue that no one knew what the cost was for.
Okay.
So they have to come up with that. There was a talk, Calton was asking for an extra police officer, and we asked, if that's the case, what's the savings gonna be on overtime?
Okay, but, so that, we need another meeting with them?
We have that, yeah, they can...
Okay.
But, I mean...
Plus, we need to meet with the treasurer, who else?
Could we do them the nineteenth? Could they be here the nineteenth for that same?
We've had plenty of time to get ready for this.
So Finance Committee's gonna be here that night anyhow?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I...
I know it's gonna be a long...
It, that's what happens, it gets like, if you can make our agenda really short for the nineteenth...
You could also meet a little bit earlier too, commit five if you want to.
No. He's gonna...
No, that's all, I don't like that.
I mean, for your regular, if they're meeting at six o'clock.
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying, like, it's already gonna, you know what I mean, like, your brain shuts off after three hours of talking about stuff.
I'd rather meet in one night than to have another night, you know what I mean? Get it done with?
Yeah, so what I'm saying is, if you can make our agenda somewhat shorter...
I just don't know what's gonna be on the agenda, and Gary gave me one thing already.
For the next agenda?
Yeah.
What is it?
Just a beat, that's quick, but I'm just, I don't know what else is gonna be on it.
If the board wants to do a five-thirty, gives us an extra half an hour, that's fine with me, I mean...
Maybe you can wrap it up in a half an hour and start with...
And if not, then we can continue.
If you keep it light and we have a half an hour either way.
And then we can continue to the next night if we have to, because we're meeting on the twentieth anyway. So anything, anything extra, we can continue.
Just flow over, okay.
All right.
That sounds...
That's why you get the big boss.
Yeah, right. That's why I'm trying to think of minimizing my time with both of you.
Wait a minute. You can say that about me, but this is the new guy.
I know.
Already, Lisa, I don't know.
She's already...
I, they never told me to go easy on them.
No, no. You know, we put, we put the rose between two thorns. You're acting like a thorn.
No, no, it's just, it, you know what, I don't want Robbie to get overwhelmed either, 'cause it's a lot of stuff all at one time. It's budgets, it's, you know what I mean, like...
And I have a very short attention span, so that works.
So everything at one time gets overwhelming, but, all right, so here we go, back to this. I'm gonna make a motion to open the warrant articles on Wednesday, April sixth, two thousand and sixteen, with a closure of Thursday, April fourteenth, at twelve noon. I'll make that motion first.
Second.
Okay, motion made to open on April sixth and close the warrant on April fourteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Go ahead.
I don't think we need any other... Yeah, we don't need any other motions, you're just gonna put everything in a calendar that I never read, right?
Correct.
All right, so none of these dates have to have a motion on, just open and closing.
Finalized warrant doesn't need a motion either?
How about the finalized warrant?
No, we don't vote on that until we finalize the warrant.
It's finalized, okay. And the date, the election...
I wanna announce to the public when the meeting is, you know, it's always the same date every year.
The first Monday in June.
First Monday in June.
Is it June sixth? Six-six. We have a special Town Meeting at seven usually, and then the annual Town Meeting follows. All right, we're done with that one. All right, we're done with that one. All right, the next thing on the agenda is to discuss signed renewal proposal for Maya Health benefits as recommended by the Health Insurance Advisory Committee. It was a meeting of the Health Insurance Advisory Committee. All members of that committee from the different departments were there except for communications. It was held on March twenty-second. It was held at the Town Hall. The meeting was called to order by the chairman, Officer Wiki, at ten AM. After looking over the documentation presented by Maya account executive, Joe Galant Shaw, relative to health insurance coverage for fiscal year sixteen, the board made a motion by Farnocherry and seconded by LaFleur to have all existing coverages continue. The increase to the town of six point four percent was passed shenanigans and the meeting adjourned at eleven thirty AM that same day. So the, there's nobody here. I was, I'm on the committee, I can tell you what went on. The, the town of Freetown has a pretty darn good loss ratio. And because of that, the increase is for us, six point four percent for the same coverage just for all our full-time and those part-time people that do receive benefits. The range that Maya was offering, the various towns that they handled throughout the Commonwealth, went from, I think, six percent to, I think it was twelve point eight percent. And we were on the bottom end. So that's the recommendation by the Health Insurance Committee.
Okay.
All right, so I hear a motion to adopt, so we can sign and continue our health insurance coverage?
Motion to adopt, I'm not sure it's necessary, but I'll do it anyway.
Second.
The motion made and seconded to adopt the recommendation and continue with the current health insurance plan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now the town administrators report.
Okay, most of my time since the board's last regular meeting has been spent writing the trash and recycling RFP and reviewing the contract documents with the assistance of town council, Ally, of course, and the dean, Kevin Bernato and Tim McIntosh. And I thank all of them for all the work that they put in to get that out in the time we wait. I also responded to citizen calls with questions about our gonk witch plans and an electric bill that did not reflect the aggregation program rate. I shipped an email to all of you concerning that today. That's working out well for the, for the resident. Paul stated Bob Barker, Bob Parker, and I also visited the Stop and Shop facility for lunch in a tour of the digester operation last Thursday. Their, their open house on that is coming up this Friday, I believe. Isn't that right? Friday the fifteenth.
I think, I think it's the fifteenth.
It's the fifteenth.
It's a week, it's a week.
Don't scare me.
Yeah, sorry about that. And today, we got a board approval, this, this is on the first, that's Friday, to file a reserve fund transfer request for twenty thousand dollars for legal services and had a conference call with town council and the water contract. That's the report for now.
Okay, now I'll turn it over to the board of health.
Board of health has no, nothing for this meeting.
Okay.
Personnel board chair person.
Um, I'd like to have a motion to reappoint Mary Bowen to the registrants. Her appointment will expire on three thirty-one, two thousand and nineteen.
I'll make the motion, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have something from Carlton that Stephen Abbott is back and returned to duty to perform all of his lieutenant responsibilities, which is awesome.
It is awesome, Mary. Stephen had, he looks very good. I saw him the other day at the Town Hall. Thanks God that he's back to working with us.
I agree. I have a change of status report for Elton Ashley from Sergeant Six at a rate of thirty-eight fifteen, I mean, thirty-one forty-one to thirty-eight fifteen.
Good, good, I think.
Good, back with.
He's acting lieutenant.
He's going, he's acting lieutenant, so he's going back to sergeant.
Okay.
Okay.
Cause it's.
From the, he's.
So where he's going back down to thirty-one forty-one. Well, I read that first and I'm like, that can't be right. Why would anybody want to take a decrease in pay?
I don't think he wants to.
That's right. I was like, that's not right.
Elton was working as.
And then I'm trying to figure it out as I'm reading and I'm like, oh, it includes an educational incentive? I'm like, okay, well.
Elton was working as the.
Poor, I know, but.
Aye.
Poor guy. Do you guys want to make that motion?
I'll make motion reassign. Sergeant Ashley's position back down to Sergeant Six.
Okay, I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Done?
All right, discuss the upcoming board of selectmen meeting dates. Okay, I think you all know that we're gonna meet on the nineteenth.
All right, we, we have a meeting on Friday.
We have a meeting on Friday, this Friday.
This Friday, right.
This Friday, what time is this Friday? Oh, yeah, ten, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
And then the April nineteenth.
Right.
And then on April nineteenth, then we have one, we have a meeting next week, right? Well, Stop and Shop?
Yes, the open house.
What, what's the date on that?
On the fifteenth at ten o'clock.
Okay.
So we have, what, what's Friday?
Fifteenth, this Friday is at ten o'clock here.
What, what, what day?
The eighth.
The eighth? Okay, and then we have four fifteen.
Four fifteen at ten.
Okay, here we go, I know, I know where this is going.
It's a test, isn't it? I don't have my calendar.
I know where this is going.
Four nineteen.
And the nineteenth, and then the twentieth.
Four twenty. Okay.
At six.
Yeah, and then we have May second, May sixteenth and May thirty-first.
May thirty-first.
That's what it says here, I'm only reading, but, I'm told to read.
That's another Tuesday.
That's if we need to.
That's the day after the holiday.
If we need to, because we have, the next week, we have, we have our, our annual town meeting, so.
We may not have these.
We may not have that one.
I won't be at that one anyhow, I'll be out of country.
The thirty-first?
Thirty-first.
Okay.
Will you be back for the annual?
Aye, good, very good. I come back on the fourth.
All right. So are we good?
See, it's not me on vacation.
All right, last thing, go business. Water agreement. To bring you guys up to speed on the water agreement, City of Fall River sent us a, a new, a new draft with the proposals that were discussed when we had the joint meeting with them about three weeks ago. We had a meeting this week with the our town council and the water, member of the water commission and myself and the town administrator made a couple minor adjustments. And we asked our town council just to discuss it with the city solicitor in Fall River. And all we're waiting on now is just the, the final, the final documents so we can move forward and sign both the water and shore agreement. And work on new language for personal bylaw. Joe Fair is supposed to have that all put together, we're gonna see Joe Fair Friday. Anybody else have anything else you need to bring up, anything under the emergency that came up today?
Um, how was your meeting the other night? Your regional finance committee.
Oh, the regional finance committee, the regional finance committee. The superintendent's presenting, I believe, tomorrow night to his, to the school committee his newest proposal, which actually is not the cut that the town want, or both towns want. And based on those figures, Lakeville is being asked to put in eight hundred and something thousand dollars and Freetown about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
And Lakeville told the superintendent that it's not gonna happen. They are gonna give what we, what the regional finance committee voted on at the prior meeting. We asked them to reduce their budget proposal by one point seven million, which would, Lakeville would give five hundred thousand dollars to the schools. An, I'm talking about increased five hundred thousand dollars. Freetown would be slightly lower than what we gave last year. So they, they have the words from the towns, from the regional finance committee, now we'll just see what they're gonna do. It's, uh.
So they reduced it to one point five?
One point seven increase.
No, no, but you asked them to reduce it to one point seven, but their cuts only reflected a reduction to one point five.
One point five, right.
Okay.
Right.
I get it.
And, you know, just to be clear, that, when we're talking cuts, we're not talking cuts in what we're giving the schools this year. This is a cut in their proposed budget that was about two point, I'm doing this from memory, two point five million higher than this year. So when you hear the word cuts, we're not cutting, nobody's cutting the current budget. We're cutting what they proposed that they want.
So what is the increase, because I don't have the numbers in front of me, but do you know what the increase is over last year's budget? Do you know that number?
With our cut at one point seven, they're getting, they're getting about eight hundred thousand more.
It's about, it's about a two and a half percent increase.
Okay, that's, that's a number one.
I don't remember percentage.
Yes, it's about two and a half percent.
So it's over, over the bottom line budget?
Over what they got this year, yes, absolutely. Absolutely. The other thing that we have, we haven't heard yet, and it has nothing to do with the regional schools, we've gotta get the current, what the figures are gonna be from the, from all colony and from Bristol.[1713.02]